Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024 regular meeting of the Student School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands aloneation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public comment. All right, as no one has signed up, moving on to the superintendent update. Dr. Baeda?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee and the public, my colleagues that are in the audience. Just a couple of bulleted items for you. That before, but we are working on placements and all of that currently. Just received the list of grades and ages and all of that. I'll keep you updated on some other issues with that as well. Health and Wellness Fair is at the high school starting at 3:00 PM with a workshop for students with Dr. Randy Schuster, who, if you have some opportunity, please consider seeing her. She's one of my favorite speakers to listen to because she's just brilliant, and she's on at 7:00 for the general public on adolescent substance abuse. And of course, the health fair is taking place from 3:45 until 7:00 at the high school. So if you're able to pop in, please do, and to the general public as well. There's a virtual parent meeting this Thursday from 3:15 to 4:00 for all parents with the superintendent. Cleanup Day is this Saturday, the 27th, from 8:00 to 12:00, a townwide initiative. It's actually being done in many communities, according to some of the signs I've been seeing. Myself, Ms. Miller, and our athletic director, Robin Ireland, will be at the MIAA training all day Friday and Saturday. Thank them both for, like to thank them publicly both for taking their Saturday, and it's with the Northeast Center for the Study of Sports and Society, and really taking a look at the topic of hate and sports and so on and so forth. So we'll report back with some information. All the Unit 8 positions that are currently open were posted on Monday. We're trying to get ourselves out there as early as possible for the hiring process. The 29th, the South School Town Meeting, Town Meeting representatives have been asked, and community members, to come to the South School at 6:30 for a short presentation followed by a walkthrough of the building, as we did with the High School Project. The Det Meeting is on the 30th at 7:00 PM. I'm hoping that we're able, some of us are able to attend. Thinking Ms. Shannon of you and your questions, trying to think like you, the attendance recovery data from the April vacation, just wanted you to know for grades 6 through 12, 52 of 169 invited students attended. We actually had some high school students who walked in that day so they could do their attendance recovery. And for K to 5, we had 22 of 124 invited students for the April. So significant increase of numbers of attendees for 6 to 12 and a decline in K to 5, but it's a project, as you know. Last day of school, I think I can say for right now, for the Jones, the Hanson, the Wilkins, the Dodd, the Gibbons, OMS, and Stoughton High School, is Monday, June 17th, with an early release day scheduled as per the vote of the school committee. That will also be an early release day for the South because of transportation. The South will get two early release days, but their last day of school is Tuesday, June 18th. If the day had happened after June 1st, we could have filed an emergency request for the South School, but because it doesn't, there is no waiver available to the school department. So the South will have two early release days, and their last day will be on the 18th. Okay? And lastly, Justin, I gave you a copy of the independent accounting report. It's a clean report. Take a look at it, and if you have any questions, we can take it up and put it on the agenda if you select. Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Baeda?
Just a really quick question. What was the date of the Health and Wellness Fair? Is that this week?
This is, that is, yes, that is Wednesday, tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, Amanda?
I just wanted to say I saw the video for the South School Project. Well done. Loved it. And I think if we can communicate that to the entire town, they'll have a great idea what's going on.
Yeah, so in terms of the video, it's being released as part of my newsletter every Friday, so we're going to be due second and third. We have, we have up to three languages now that are being done. Thank you to our interpreters locally, our Stoughton staff, and we're going to see if we can also get it out on local cable access. That's going to be a request that'll go forward. Thank you.
I have one quick question. I have been asked again what the status of the electric vehicle charges at the high school are.
You know, I just wrote it down because I said to myself, I'm going to be asked this question. I will email you tomorrow, I promise.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I apologize for that.
They are very persistent, so I appreciate that. All right, our student advisory committee representative is unable to attend, so unfortunately, if they do come in later, we'll circle back to them. But I'd like to get on to new business. I appreciate all of you waiting. I want to get to you as soon as possible. First off, I want to check off some appointments. For warrants, I appoint the chair, myself, Catherine Weiss, and vice chair Lindsay Kreckler to warrants. So that will solve the issue now that we have a backup, in case we had an issue like we did two weeks ago when I was unable to sign things. So that will be, take care of that. And I know that Dr. Baeda, you wanted to get moving on the transportation working group. I appoint Armando Barbosa to serve as the school committee representative on that working group. Thank you, Armando, for volunteering, and he actually volunteered. That was not a forced volunteer, and so he's excited and looking forward to seeing the results of that. We have a number of other appointments that we need to address. We'll do that either at the end of the school year or at the beginning of next. But in the interest of time, I would like to turn it over to our curriculum update.
Pull up more chairs?
Is that where we'll turn the microphone off?
I know. Did you, did you turn that one on?
Hello. Welcome. On behalf of the team here, I'd like to say thank you for having us here tonight. It's a pleasure to meet you all. We're excited to share with you what we're working on. My name is Suzanne Dunn. I'm the Secondary Humanities Curriculum Director.
I'm Diane McDonough. I'm the pre-K to 5 STEM Director.
Brian Scanlon, 6 to 12 STEM Director.
And Eileen Sprague, our pre-K through 5 humanities director couldn't be here today. So Diane and I will be trading off her shares. We wanted to start tonight by talking about what is guiding a lot of our curriculum work, which is our vision of the graduate in Stoughton. We had an extensive process of creating our vision of the graduate led by Principal Miller. We were part of that team. We developed the core competencies for the district, which are critical thinking, cultural proficiency, a healthy being, communication, personal responsibility, and a growth mindset. At our recent Niasq visit, we were commended on our vision of the graduate, which was something they had asked us to work on since their last visit. So thinking about the vision of the graduate and curriculum, we started thinking, how can we embed this in everything we do? So the vision was presented to our full leadership team at the Leadership Retreat last summer, so all of the principals are on board and working towards this vision. And when creating our curriculum maps, we are, beginning next year, having our teachers work on three new elements to our curriculum maps, which is a connection to the vision of the graduate, culturally proficient practices, and connection to our SEL core competencies. So this brings all of our district initiatives together, and we're making sure that they are embedded in what we teach in this district. The common template that we're using in our online platform, we are working right now on creating, taking our existing curriculum maps and putting them into that platform, and those three new boxes are included there, those three new elements. It is our goal that this will help us be horizontally and vertically aligned, pre-K through 12, and that we will make sure we're meeting the needs of all students in our district. The maps are being entered into the platform as we speak. It is an ongoing process that we will be working on next year, but once it is completed, we do hope to make elements of that public facing. So I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Scanlon, and we'll talk about our curriculum review process.
Yeah, so one of the bigger things we've done for the last couple of years, it kind of stopped after COVID, is the curriculum, a formal district-wide curriculum review process. Ours currently is four phases over five years, so every content starts at one of the phases, and then we cycle through. We try to offset those so that we weren't doing every single one, year one, but I'll go through those four phases over five years. Phase one is the self-study, and that consists of an analysis of the current curriculum and development of an action plan towards potentially a new curriculum or altering our current curriculum. Phase two is develop and redesign, where we are developing and/or revising curriculum. Phase three, which is the two years, the only two-year cycle there, is when we implement and monitor, so implementation of said curriculum. This gets a little dicey if we are choosing a new curriculum mid-cycle, which we've done. And then phase four is the evaluate, so we're evaluating data and outcomes based on the curriculum. And so the rationale behind doing this is to ensure horizontal and vertical alignment pre-K to 12, to ensure the curriculum is grade level and we're meeting all the state standards, to use assessment data to inform and improve the curriculum, to identify changes and trends in our community. And then I think one of the biggest pieces is to provide a forum for decision-making. So on these curriculum teams, or our curriculum team, and then building administrators, teachers, sped, L, I'm probably missing some important people, but we get stakeholders from pre-K to 12, and it doesn't have to be just like when we're in the math phase, math people. So we're bringing in a lot of different lenses, and it has been incredibly helpful to move decisions forward and have it not feel top-down. So we are in the process of those, and we're going to go through, oh, I get to keep talking. We're going to, we're going to go through where we are in some of those. They told me to read directly from, so I'm going to talk about STEM. Secondary science, we don't have new curriculum changes. At middle or high school for science, we have a self-created curriculum that we feel is high-quality and functional. But what I did want to talk about is the Access Grant that we currently are participating in, and ACCESS stands for Aligned Curricular and Career Experiences for Secondary Science. No way I would have remembered that. And that's through Mass BioEd. So we got approximately, I'm saying approximately because it's going to depend on what materials we end up using, but $230,000 for this grant. And essentially what it is, is a three-year grant where year one, Mass Bio doctors and educators come in, they run hands-on labs for our students and teachers, and they do all of the work. Our teachers get to kind of sit back and watch. Year two, they are kind of co-teaching that, where the teacher is more, in theory, more of a helper, but still watching. Year three, they watch us complete this, and they purchase all the materials so that after three years, our teachers have what we need to recreate those labs moving forward. It has been incredibly well-received on our end and on Mass Bio's end, so that is the secondary science update.
And for elementary science, this year, we implemented mystery science in grades K through 5. It's a hands-on, Massachusetts standards-aligned curriculum that teaches students how to act and behave and think like scientists. They come with kits, and the teachers and students love these because they're grab-and-go. So once a teacher wants to do a lesson, they just grab it, they have all the materials, and they're ready to go for the lesson. Math is currently in phase four, and I'm going to send it back to Mr. Tannen.
So in high school math, again, we have predominantly self-created curriculum, although we are piloting an Algebra I curriculum at the high school this year, and that is through a grant from the state for high-quality instructional material. So the state puts out what they deem, based on the curate system, which is teachers kind of putting together their thoughts, high-quality instructional material. We landed on illustrative math through the platform Imagine Learning. I know you guys are going to remember all of this. And so part of the, part of the thinking is, is that this flips math a little bit from I do, we do, you do, to you do, we do, I do. So it puts more onus on students to think critically and collaborate conversationally around math. And so it's, it is rigorous, it is, we're in the pilot, so it has been a learning experience for us. I think it is very different than how we've traditionally taught math, but students over this year have shown incredible growth in being able to talk functionally about math, which is a huge win for us. And there's a lot of problem-solving, critical thinking that goes into that. I'm already off-script, so. They told me not to do this. All right, OMS, OMS math. Similarly, we adopted a new curriculum for the middle school, which is Desmos. We did this last year. We piloted another high-quality instructional material. It uses the same standards, so the illustrative platform, but instead of Imagine Learning, we use Desmos, 6 to 8. And similarly, it is deemed high-quality, it is real-world applicable, it is getting students talking and thinking about math rather than regurgitating like formulaic knowledge. So it is a blend of online and paper-based, which the middle school teachers love, and the students seem to appreciate, the interactivity of it. And there is a ton of collaboration, and it is set in a way where classrooms will look and feel the same if you go in while maintaining teacher autonomy.
All right, at the elementary level for math, the curriculum review team identified common assessments as a focus for grades 3 through 5. So this year, grades 3 through 5 are implementing online assessments through a program called Peer Assessments. These provide students with practice for computer-based technology-type questions that they'll encounter on MCAS, and it also helps us to align not only horizontally but also vertically. So now students in grades 3 through 12 are using online peer assessments for math and other subjects. And humanities.
Yes.
So elementary humanities, literacy is currently being, we're revising our vision and our philosophy of instruction for literacy, and we're also examining our current practices to ensure that all teachers are educated in the science of reading.
And we are in phase one in, in the literacy planning, so we are starting at really reevaluating our curriculum, doing a needs assessment, looking at what we really need to work on, and then creating an action plan for going forward. So we are in the process of writing that action plan right now, but we know that a lot of the work next year will be on incorporating those three new elements into our curriculum and making sure that we are teaching and assessing grade-level standards at each level and have that clear vertical alignment, 6 through 12. And then in history and social sciences, Diane's going to speak to the elementary for Eileen.
So we're currently exploring investigating history curriculum, and this is from DESI. We're implementing it this year for grade 5, and we hope to add it to grades 3 and 4 once the state releases the new curriculum.
And again, at the secondary level, they are in phase three, so they are in the process of implementing their curriculum that they worked very hard on, and we are also monitoring that curriculum, and they will be working on those three additional elements as well. I thought I would add in, because World Languages falls under humanities as well, that we are implementing a new curriculum in World Languages for Spanish, French, and Chinese. That is from Carnegie Learning. So we are, this is our first year implementing that. They've gotten their training, and they're putting that into practice this year. And then our other languages, which did not fall under the Carnegie Learning umbrella, are working on those curriculum revisions as well alongside of them and making sure they all align. Oh, and I was mentioning that the, the alignment now that we have from grades 7 through 12 is being designed to work towards our students being able to pass the seal of by literacy, which over 70 students this year just took, which was very exciting.
And professional development comes up as a focus area across all curriculum when we have our review process meetings. So this year at Wilkins, we have four educators that are implementing instructional coaching model, and they are right now participating in a 16-week training for instructional coaching. Instructional coaching provides focused professional development with individual teachers or a team of teachers. It pairs educators with a coach to facilitate and support individual needs and leads to improved instruction. They go through what's called an impact cycle, and that allows teachers to get feedback, coaches to model, and allows for an opportunity for reflection. So this empowers teachers to implement new evidence-based strategies into their classroom. It fosters a community of lifelong learners and teachers who are reflecting on their practice. And then finally, we want to wrap up and just highlight our data meetings. We hold data meetings in K through 12. We have data teams that consist of educators, curriculum directors, building principals, and other staff who work with students. This year, the elementary assessment calendar was adjusted, so we have designated days where we hold these meetings after each benchmark window. So they have three times a year for the beginning, middle, and end-of-the-year assessments. They're also held at the middle school as well, and we follow a strict protocol that we have created in the district. When we hold these meetings, we have flow charts to help us identify which students may need intervention or further assessments, and the team analyzes the STAR benchmark data, and we discuss students' needs, instructional needs, and provide any necessary support that our educators need.
So K to 8, those meetings center around STAR, the benchmark assessment, like Diane was saying. At the high school, we don't use STAR, but we have mid-year and final data that we can look at and MCAS data. So Dr. Dunn and I would meet with department heads, teachers on that data. So the structure is slightly different because we're not using the same data, but we are still running those at the high school as well. And that's it.
That's it. We're happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. That was a lot of information. Don't have any misunderstandings. Our recording secretary.
We tried to keep it short, but get it all in there.
We'll open up to questions from the committee. Here are Chris.
I'm so glad you mentioned data. So one of the things I was wondering, and thank you so much for this comprehensive report. It is very comprehensive, and I think I was able to follow about 68% of it. I appreciate it. I'm wondering, in terms of like creating a baseline and looking at those data points, what are some of the key data points that you really are trying to track and address through some of these curriculum shifts and these resources and these approaches that you're leveraging? I'm thinking about like MCAS science scores, for example, math scores, you know, are there particular sub-population groups that you're trying to build some equity around test scores or grades or interventions and things of that nature? And do you have any evidence of success? And if so, do you then leverage that to maybe maintain an approach? So I'm just curious about how you approach data and make data-informed decisions.
You know, if it's quiet, I'll talk. So that's, that's a big question, and I appreciate it. I will try to answer some of it. I think that one of the things we do is try to find data that, that we can make sure is impacting learning or student outcomes. Certainly, we look at demographic information, grade level, all of these things for, for sub-populations. I wish we had the right answer for how to fix those things, but I think we are keenly aware of like looking at some of the higher-level classes and who makes up those classes and trying to find ways creatively to not have them always look like that. Again, do we have the answer? No, but they are certainly on our radar. I think we use, we use data, in terms of like looking at, for instance, at the high school, we just had more kids failing algebra in the past couple of years than in previous years. There's probably a lot of reasons behind that. Either way, we thought we have to do something about this, so hitting reset on the curriculum felt like it made sense for us to just like start over and have all teachers start at the same place, all students start at the same place. I will let you know in a year or two if that works. I feel positive about it, but, so I don't know if I'm answering your question perfectly, probably not, but I think that we try to find data points across students, not just in math, that can make up like the totality of a student's success or lack thereof, and then try to work with teachers to figure out why some of this stuff is happening.
The nice thing about STAR is there are so many detailed reports you can give teachers. So you can give them reports on individual students, but you can also create grouping reports. So it'll say, report, you know, you should group these students in this class based on this skill and work in the small groups with those students. There are so many things that when we have these data meetings at the middle school, for example, we can present them with these charts and, you know, and then here are all the students that are actually in front of you right now. So how can we, you know, reconfigure our curriculum to work best for the students in front of you in this moment? So it's nice that we do it three times a year, so we have those constant updates going on. We can see the progress, we can see the students that still need intervention and address those, those issues.
Yeah, as Suzanne was saying, some of these reports can target specific skills, and you can group students by those skills. And within STAR, they then have sub-tests for the elementary students to see which literacy skills or math skills students may need some extra support in.
That's excellent.
Sorry. So one of the, I would say one of the success stories comes from the middle school, where last year we used STAR data, and it's one of the data points that's real-time, right? So MCAS is a little bit harder to make sense of, but STAR is happening like in, as, as we're teaching these students. And so at the middle school, we developed a plan where we looked at, once the STAR test ended, we looked at, you know, the students not achieving at the level we would like, and then we started to give them targeted during the school day intervention. We would take a small group and focus on very few standards, one, two, three standards, so we could, we could try to make a quick jump on those standards. We gave them a pre-test, then nine, eight, nine days of instruction, and then a post-test, and we saw overwhelmingly positive. It's not possible to do that with every student struggling, but we were able to target one specific subgroup in a 10-day cycle, so we were able to reach more students that way, and then, and then rinse and repeat on the mid-year, and then use the end-of-year data to hopefully propel us into next year. So we're, we're taking those learning experiences and trying to say, how can we make that bigger? How can we make that better? And how can we target more students with it? But I would say that, that was a success story from using data in real-time from STAR.
And at the elementary level, similar situation. After each benchmark, students are put into small groups if they need additional support, and then within six to eight weeks, we retest them to see how much growth they have made in. Students in a short amount of time with that small-group instruction make tremendous gains.
So it sounds like you're using the STAR report as like a formative assessment that's assessing the process of learning as opposed to the student's ability, per se. To, that's, that's, that's fantastic. One other question, and I have a feeling this is going to be an amazing answer, simply because of how you're structured, but feedback loops, going from the high school back to the middle school to inform instruction from the middle school to the high school or to the elementary school, elementary to pre-K, you know, where are there opportunities to leverage that data to inform the feedback so that teachers can adjust, so that there's alignment, like you say, vertically and horizontally?
Those opportunities typically happen on our early-release days because those are the times when the middle school and the high school can be together, or the elementaries can all be together. They've spent a lot of time the last couple of years, I've only been here since last year, so you can speak to before that, but working on those curriculum maps collaboratively. So we're seeing that through, through line now, and we're just fine-tuning and, you know.
And I think the curriculum review meetings offer us the chance, which we don't get a ton of, to sit like, like Suzanne and I, to sit with elementary preschool teachers to figure out like what's actually happening in a science class in elementary versus us just looking at MCAS data, and it's black and white, and it doesn't, MCAS data is fine, it tells us something, but not, not everything we need. So I would say those curriculum review meetings that are four times a year are helpful to hear just different personalities and levels talk and tell us what's going on, and then we try to leverage those, like Suzanne said, in, in any kind of PD time or joint time that we have together. So in June, we hope that our, our middle school teachers and high school teachers can collaborate on the last PD day because we found that to be helpful in targeting students that might come into the high school who need more support academically or otherwise, or figure out what are we doing mathematically or in science, and how does that change? Because, you know, one of the things we've talked a lot about is having, having, having math or science look different and feel different in eighth grade to ninth grade, regardless of what, what class the student is in. Just have, have the atmosphere, make it feel like math class is different. So as, you know, we always want some level of teacher autonomy, but we also want students to have a fair and, and equal experience moving forward and not blindside them with like, ha-ha, curveball, now everything's different. So I think we have had those conversations in, in the last five years. I'll just talk about my time.
And one of the benefits of having a team of four is that if we can't be at a meeting, we collaborate and have these conversations ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add one thing in as well, since you talked about data? We are bringing a new platform online, this coming year called EduClimber. And the difference for data meetings that we had this year compared to next year, once the system comes online, is all the data actually goes into one system. So you don't have to pull a STAR report, you don't have to go and find your MCAS data, or even student attendance, that it's all in one place. And the additional piece that's coming online next year is an SEL screener across the entire spectrum, which data will also be put into the EduClimber platform and then cross-correlate with everything else. So everything in one place, all the data, including the new data for even social, emotional health, will all be there for everyone to look at. And for somebody running a data team meeting, you can actually create a custom report correlating all the data that a teacher can access or a group of teachers can access. So you can say, "I want to have a meeting to talk about this." You don't have to spend the time to pull the data. Here's a report you can run on your kids, and then we can talk about how they're doing or what we want to do with this, or where it's going to go, or how we're going to set up progress monitoring. So it should be a tremendous tool for the curriculum team and our principals to use it in looking at the data and figuring out what's going on for all of our kids across the full gamut of the available data.
Sounds like that would provide some opportunities for some longer-term tracking. Turn that on. Some longer-term tracking as well, which would benefit the school committee as we think about policies and funding and where we want to prioritize resources. So that's excellent. That's great to hear. Thank you for sharing that.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee?
One.
Okay, let's see, and then I'll get to it.
It's like we're being here now instead of on the end.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I feel like this was really helpful, and I just appreciate kind of getting the color and the outlines of everything that's going on day to day. One question about the DESI designation of like high-quality instructional material. Hearing you all share that like some of our curriculum material is created in-house in district, like is there a process we have to go through to get that approved by DESI? Or is that, I know that's like stuff they're still kind of working on at the state level? Like what is, how does that work? I feel like that's not a very well-articulated question, but like, is there a challenge there or am I reading into it too much? Like alignment between our stuff and DESI requirements? Does this make sense?
Yeah, so being someone that's a little bit involved with it, and I know that the four of them are as well, so we've had this discussion before around this whole idea of the motivation of the state to tell us what the material should be. And literacy is the number-one target right now, right?
As opposed to the science?
As opposed to the sciences, it's not as controversial, if you will, as the literacy because of the science of reading and the one shoe fits all. You know, you've got the content versus skill concepts that are taking place. And the, you know, the governor, as you know, announced very clearly incentives for purchasing the, one of the five, if I remember correctly, Eileen would correct me, but I think it's five literacy areas. And right now, most of us are at a standstill where we're just watching to see what is this data really going to show for those that are going to decide to purchase and implement. Remember, purchase of a curriculum in some of these districts is not $100,000, it's hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars. So, and they've used this process at the state level that we have a lot of questions about at the local level. So it's a little bit more about the debate around literacy than it is some of the content areas of math and science specifically. And social studies, as a form of social studies, I'm not even sure they're doing anything with it, but discussion for another day.
Am I making a connection here that it doesn't actually exist, like in terms of where it came from? Okay, thank you. Sorry.
I'm going to ask two questions, but I won't make it seem like one. What do you need to supercharge learning in Stone, and I mean supercharge, in getting really good kids involved and enjoying the lessons, enjoying coming into school? And what do you find as roadblocks that always trip you up when you think you're going to, this is going to help a great deal, and something trips you up? What are those two things?
That's a big question.
It's quiet, I'm going to talk.
I mean, I can say, in terms of humanities, like a big push we're trying to make is to make things more engaging for students, both through text selection and through adding more choice and voice into the classroom. Ms. Anderson can tell you, we've been implementing book clubs, both at the middle school and high school level. Some did at the end of year last year, but everyone is doing at least one book club unit this year. So that allows students to choose a book, to read it with their friends, you know, and they've all been finding that really engaging. I've been hearing some great stories from the teachers about how it's, you know, it's an energizing exercise in the classroom, you know? So I think the more student-led activities that we can implement in the classroom, the more engaged students will be in learning. And so we've definitely made movements toward implementing more elements like that.
And similar at the elementary level, both for all content, particularly math and sciences, making things more hands-on, more engaging, and more relevant, giving them real-world examples and problems to try to solve. And students seem to be very engaged by that, instead of doing something, a word problem just out of the textbook, making it more relevant for their everyday lives.
Yeah, I mean, I'll second most of what was said. Secondary STEM, I think, completely hinges on students' desire to participate in a lesson. So if we go back to 1950s and we're like drill-and-kill, you know, stand-and-deliver-type math, it just doesn't win the kids over as much as it sounds like it would. So we have moved in science. Science is one of the fun, easy ones because it's generally lab-based, even if it's not a lab-based science, it's hands-on, students are engaged, it's easy, real-world connections. Math, less, bless you. So I think that's where these, the new curriculum ideology was to get students talking more, to get students thinking more, rather than, I think I said it earlier, just regurgitating facts and like, "Here's a formula, plug it in, you'll forget it next week, but we're going to move on." So understanding the why behind the math is the biggest push. Certainly, people of our age or older think it's different math or new math. It is not. It is just teaching kids why they are doing a formula. So when we can have students talking about a real-world issue, I think that's where we get the most bang for our buck. So I think we're seeing that in a lot of cases happen. The data will follow, and I'm sure we'll make some adjustments. Roadblocks, I think, I'm just going to keep talking. Time, it's always time. It's always time. Like getting students who are struggling thereafter school, getting students to school in general, because I think our teachers build engaging lessons. I think we are thoughtful with what we are teaching and how we're teaching. So I think the roadblock ends up being time every single time for us in STEM. Like, we can, I can look at a high school math class or middle school math class and know that COVID is still with us because of the gaps created in those fun years.
And also time for teachers to review data and collaborate together and plan together.
Yeah, so I think time is what you'll always hear from us, time, money, those things that we don't, you know, always have control over, or ever have control over. But I don't know that there are other roadblocks. I think that we, when we implement something new, we do see gains immediately, whether they translate to MCAS scores or not sometimes is a fun prediction to make. But I think if you were to walk through the middle school or high school, you would see engaging lessons from enthusiastic teachers who want to be there and are trying like desperately to motivate students and change what they've done last week, last year, 10 years ago, to meet the needs of students today, which is always, always changing. So I would say we're trying to eliminate the roadblocks as best we can, and I think our teachers do a really good job of meeting the students' needs in real time.
What can the school committee and data do to help?
Am I allowed to say money?
Yes. Money.
No, I think that processes that educators create work. And so I think that, unless you're going to throw money at us, which we will take, I think like new schedule ideas, which is being talked about, are being talked about. You know, we've looked at a lot of grants recently to try to like infuse PD opportunities for teachers and things like that. So I don't know if this, I'm just rambling now, but...
No, no, I want to hear it.
Time and money, I would say. Your support is obviously everything to the community, so, you know, having these conversations, thanks for inviting us, because this is nice to be heard. I like, put me in front of a microphone, I'll talk all night. So I think these kind of things, talking to us, like, "Let's do this more. Invite me back."
Can you say a little bit more about grants? You mentioned grants.
Yeah, so, you know, so I think the state has put out a lot of, a lot more grant money, or maybe it's just on my radar more the last couple of years, but like the access grant, you know, finding a lot of money, $230,000 in a science grant is like life-changing for us because we're buying materials that we would never be able to purchase otherwise. So any grant that offers us the ability to try something new, to throw money at something that, you know, it's like the high-quality instructional material, we got grant money to do that. Is it going to work perfectly? I don't know. It will be a process like every curriculum, but having the ability to say, "Let's give it a try," I think is incredibly helpful. At times where we're saying, "We need to do more, we need to reach these kids in a different way, in a better way, our teachers need more time, our teachers need more PD," you know, we're like trying to reinvent education daily since COVID. And I think we take for granted how much work teachers put into it. I'm not saying you guys do this, I think we as society. You know, so I think any kind of grace that you guys can give us, all the money that we can walk away with. But these kind of conversations where we hear your input, your kids' input, the community's input outside of school, these are really helpful things. I'm going to let someone else talk.
No, I think you covered it.
Could I ask Diane to talk about one thing real quick? The shift in the instructional model at the elementary levels or the workshop model?
Oh, yes. So as Brian was saying, there's a lot of, you know, sage on the stage where the teacher is doing most of the talking, and it's "I do, you do, we do." We are transitioning with the instructional coaching piece to be more of a workshop model, where the teacher will do a short mini lesson, and then students will be broken up into smaller groups. And some of them may be based, as you were talking about earlier, on those skills that were identified during the STAR assessment. So students will get that small targeted instruction that they need. So it's a nice way for a teacher to teach many different skills within their short period of time that they have the students in front of them.
Yeah, and then we're building on that at the secondary level with these book club units, because we use a book called A Novel Approach by Kate Roberts, which is a hybrid approach to combining whole-class teaching with workshop model. So you teach a whole-class text together, students learn a skill, and then they switch into independent reading in their book clubs and apply that skill independently. So it's that shift from, "We're doing it together as a class," to now you are actually applying that skill we just taught. And again, with choice and voice being a major component of the workshop model.
Are we doing the same thing with math?
Yes, at the elementary level, that is the shift, that we're going towards a workshop model or a guided math model, where the teacher is doing, once again, that mini lesson, and then breaks the students out into smaller groups, or they call them stations or rotations. So a lot of times, the teachers will have a menu posted on the board for math, and there's that technology component, and students are put on a program, which we didn't mention, called Freckle, which is an adaptive practice piece. So students are actually working at their just-right level, is what Freckle calls it. So that's one of the ways, too, that we differentiate within the math classroom, is to put students on Freckle, and they're only on it for about 10, maybe 15 minutes, it all depends on how long the math block is.
And Freckle and STAR are connected. They're from the same platform, so they work together.
Very good. Just wanted to add one quick comment real quick, because I know it's, we're on target here. First of all, thanks to my colleagues for being here tonight. But I think we have to step back for a second, just think about the amount of work that our teachers have every day. It's really important to remember that, right? These folks are the experts and the leaders, the teachers are the leaders and the experts in the classroom, and we're doing some really great things, and we need to celebrate those more than we are. Yeah, we're talking a lot about chronic absenteeism because we have to, failure rates because we have to, but we also need to balance that with the discussion on the other side of all the great things that we're doing. So I'm hoping as we move, and I'll take Dr. Scanlon's comment earlier, that you need to have these people in front of you on a more regular basis. You really do. So that you can see through the teachers what they're being asked to do, and then having the teachers come in as well and show you an example of a grade-three freckle, you know, which I always write that word down because I think it's the funniest word in education. But I think it's really important at the high school level, middle school level, K to five, preschool, to have our teachers and our directors and principals come every once in a while and just say, "Let's talk about academics today. How are we doing? What are our needs?" Because I think you folks need to continuously have that piece of information as you're making those, at times, difficult budget decisions on where the funds need to be expanded, because the grants are going to continue to run out, and they're not going to be available to all of us all the time. And so those decisions become critical academically. So if you're doing coaching, you heard Dr. Quigley the other day talk about the instructional coaching that took place with the EL students and the significant increase because of that and continuing that model, that that's a tier-one approach that you're having, tier-one meaning whole classroom, individual in that classroom, moving to tier-two where they're getting further supports in the classroom, tier-three, the more of the pull-out model, and interventions, which right now we know is an area of concern going forward because we don't have them in the budget. So that's the reason why these curriculum discussions are really important for the committee and to celebrate. Ms. Kleckler and I have had this discussion a number of times, that we need to have some more discussions about the things that are going on really well as a district, but to make sure that we're also dealing with the things that we need to improve. So thank you both, our all.
Thank you.
To that point, Dr. Baola, I wonder if I could encourage you and your team to think about how we might incorporate that as a standing agenda item. I love the idea of maybe starting our meetings from an asset-based frame, including the superintendent's update. It doesn't have to be all-inclusive, but to highlight and to think about how we might rotate that to ensure equal weight to academic versus enrichment versus outside-of-school programming, you know, teaching, counseling, administrative wins, you know, all of that. But I would love to integrate that into our meetings.
I am more than likely, more than happy to call the superintendent's update something else and provide you a memo if I have to, because I think it's the most important part of what the five of you do, is you need to know what's happening in our schools. You're going to hear from all aspects of people, you know, at Stop &amp; Shop when you're shopping and getting the gas or at the ball field. But when you hear from your teachers, you get another perspective of what's really going on, and like I said, the positive stuff that is really happening, the creative stuff that you get to see in the classrooms every day. So I couldn't agree more.
On that note, on that note, any other questions or comments? I think we've covered quite a bit. Thank you very much. This is really helpful and...
Thank you.
I think we should continue the conversation for things. All right.
Somebody take that guy away from the microphone. Guy needs a bigger microphone.
I'm going to stay just for that.
Permanent invitation.
The next item on the agenda are the Joint Labor Management Committee recommendations. We have first up the certain high school schedule. A number of handouts related to this. I know we have a number, asked some questions of Ms. Miller, who is grateful enough to answer them and provide some more information about what the proposed schedule would look like in comparison to the current schedule. We have some information from Mr., from Dr. Quigley and from Mr. Clark regarding EL and special education. I'd like to open up to the committee for further questions or comments to discuss the MOU for this. I don't know if you want to start, Lindsay, or...
Yeah, sure. So I want to say thank you so much to Ms. Miller and Ms. Quigley for putting these answers to our questions together. I said at the last meeting that we needed to like make sure we did our homework on this one, and I feel like you all really helped us with that, so thank you. I had, I do have a question. Is it okay? I have a question about the high school schedule that I didn't get to ask yet, I apologize. I know we've talked a lot, some of the things that we already sent you were like about changes to instructional practice, like impact on homework, impact on, like, we really covered it, and I really appreciate how you spoke to it. I think the thing I forgot to include was a question about senior privileges and how that will get impacted, and I feel like that probably falls under the same category as like half-days and snow days and that sort of thing, where it's like we might have to figure it out, but was wondering if you'd given that any thought? And I apologize for not including that, I'd forgotten to...
That's all right. Senior privilege is one of those things that I often turn over to the senior class to think of other ideas for incorporating senior privileges. Currently, senior privileges is just offered through structured learnings, and not all of our seniors actually get to take advantage of it because they don't necessarily have a structured learning that falls first or last period of the day. If students have, if seniors have a structured learning in the first period, they can come in late into school. If they have structured learning last period, they can leave early from school. So not all seniors get an opportunity to take advantage of that. So I often turn it back to the senior class and ask them, "What do you want to do?" and ask them, what other things could we do as a school district or as a high school to provide a, sort of a senior privilege to you? Um, and so I'm, I'm always extending that invitation. I still extend that invitation. And if we go to this new schedule, I would extend that, um, invitation as well because we are, as a school, you know, working to reduce the number of structured learnings in general. We always have, since I, um, came on to Stoughton High School's principal, uh, 12 years ago. We have sort of marched towards that model of trying to lessen the number of structured learnings because we offer so many wonderful classes and we want students to have the opportunity to take advantage of the free education at Stoughton High School. Um, so we have sort of eliminated those as many times as we could, um, but we still have them. But again, in, you know, in the new schedule and, and with some changes, those, uh, structured learners will continue to sort of be weeded out. Uh, so we will be looking for other options for, uh, senior privilege.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and I do want to say too, I appreciated, um, some of the work that some of our department heads, or depart, what are we? Um, Mr. Clark and Dr. Qualey.
Uh, directors.
Directors, thank you. Um, not department heads, put into like explaining how the schedule will benefit, um, English learners and special education students. So I feel like there's a lot here. Um, I think something I asked about too, and something we've talked about is, um, student voice and some of the context of like how student experience and feedback was, like, over the last several years after COVID was rolled into creating the schedule. And I think to your point about like senior privileges and like making sure there's student voice there too, I would love to see, um, some student voice involved in the rollout process, um, as we like it, assuming if the committee votes to adopt this, would like to see like some student voice in like this school year around like what do you need as we plan ahead, like getting students involved and proactively thinking about what it would take next year for them to be successful in this model and just knowing that like, you know, it's, it would be a new schedule, fresh start, like how can we make sure that, um, teachers are equipped to provide supports for longer blocks every day and also that students are prepared to advocate for them. Um, and then also like with all this, um, information about hopes for attendance rates and academic impact, hoping that we can have some points built into the year to like measure that. And that's something we've talked about too, just like, um, making sure that we're assessing this throughout and involving student voice and feedback there too, I think would be really valuable.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, that point is taken and I would absolutely echo that we would be collecting data. We're always collecting data anyways. We want to review the things that we are doing. Uh, the, the contract will be up for negotiation again in another year and a half before you know it. Um, and so there'll be the opportunity to look at the schedule at that time too, but make some tweaks as we go. Um, and so we will be looking at that data because we want to make sure that we're making the right moves, um, for our kids.
I think like to some of the points that came up in the last presentation about like being responsive to student needs, I, I think the flex block has a lot of potential to do that and I just want to make sure we're like, you know, paying attention to it and making sure it's like living up to that potential and really impacting students for the better.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments, feedback? Chris?
Just to piggyback on, uh, my colleagues' comments around, around metrics, um, really thinking long and hard with your team about realistically what indicators do you think you would want this change to move? Um, and then establishing that baseline, um, and, and not just in terms of, of current, um, data or metrics, but also in terms of like utilization rates, like of the flex block and how that is, is leveraged. Um, just to inform if we need to make adjustments going forward, we can do that in an informed way. We have a baseline and then we know, oh, well, it looks like there's really heavy need for this. How can we be more responsive? So, um, I know you'll do that. You're very thoughtful when it comes to those things.
Armando, any, oh, Dr. Beta, did you have more to say?
So Madam Chair, through you and the, the committee, I, I'm, I'm going to do what I normally do, which is to say too much, but, um, one of the concerns, as you, as the committee knows, um, is, is this process, right? And I urge the school committee and the STA to find a way to make sure that the scheduling of a school is really about the education and not some of the politics of education. Because my concern is simply, very simple. Um, there's different people on your seats on a regular basis. There's different people in my seat on a regular basis. There's pretty consistent seats on that basis, right? And so I think it's important to find that common thread, if you will, so that there is full input from the elected board, full input, um, but that it really is through education reform at the hands of the building principal. I think that's important to remember that. And I know that this is, this is something that happened years ago. It has nothing to do with the five of you or in even the current leadership. But I, I urge you as, as you come down that road in less than a few months, when you open up a contract again, that you have those discussions. So that's part one. I think part two, you know, I've, I've supported this recommendation, so I'm going on the record that I am recommending that you consider this agreement, um, as, uh, for the next at least two years, um, that we do provide the school committee, uh, the data on a regular basis as clearly articulated by the committee, um, through the principal's office and my office. Um, and then third, that, um, as you are hearing things, because you are out in the community and you are the voice, um, as you remind me, um, quite directly and, and to be frank, you should, um, that if you are hearing things, that I need to know about it so that we can get to the heart of it before it becomes, as you know, an unfounded piece of information. It's so important because the one thing I put on here that I wanted to define for the committee is change is hard. Change is hard, but the purpose of what we're doing is to better students' opportunities. And I believe through the information that you received that you have there tonight, I'd like to thank you for your consideration and whatever way you vote, we will carry out the judgment of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other feedback or questions?
I just want to say, yeah, it's, this is a hard decision. There's a lot of information here, um, to, to kind of process and I do appreciate how much has been addressed of the students. I mean, I think following the, the data and, and following it for the next two years is, is key. I know there's been some concerns. I, I appreciate especially, um, Mr. Clark laying out some of the advantages to students who are on IEPs or who are in special education, um, in terms of having these more consistent blocks and these longer blocks. Um, certainly still have concerns, you know, what, it'd be interesting to see, watch how this plays out in the longer blocks consistently, um, for that length of time. For some students, that might be a challenge, but I know that is something that we're thinking of and certainly would appreciate that as part of the metrics we follow. Um, but yes, definitely see a lot of potential for, for some good things that, to come of this. So, um, are we ready to vote? All right. Do I have a motion?
I can, I move that we approve the proposed new Stoughton High School bell schedule for the 2024-2025 school year alongside twice-annual data collection around key student indicators and student feedback in a s- school committee survey. Does that, okay. That's, that's the motion.
Does that cover the MOA? Do we need to?
Yeah, I would, I would.
I apologize. I would simply say the approval of the MOU as, as written with the specifications of the request.
Okay. Should I say?
I would, please.
So I move to approve the proposed MOA for the Stoughton High School schedule for the 2024-2025 school year. I already forgot.
As written.
As written in the, as written in the proposal, um, as written in the proposed schedule, um, alongside data collection around key student indicators and student feedback in a school committee survey.
And simply because, uh, before you second to clarify, the MOU is very specific, right between you and the S, STA, but your request for the administration to gather data is on you. You can clearly ask for that at any point.
All right, so with that, that motion is, okay. All right, so we have this motion to approve the MOU is, is written alongside a request of the administration to provide data. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
A second from, so the motion was made by Lindsay, a seconded by Chris. Um, the motion was moved and seconded. Do we have a, another motion on the table? All right, if you are ready, any discussion, further discussion or questions? Ready to vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried five-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And now on to the next. And this is the OMS advisory. Um, we have Ms. Crowley here to answer some questions. Um, again, thank you for preparing, um, more questions or, you know, answering some more of our questions and, um, providing more materials for us on, um, this particular, a new change to the OMS schedule. Um, I really appreciate the explanation of what this advisory period would be used for and how that would benefit students. Um, are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the OMS advisory proposal? And again, this is the, another MOU. Lindsay?
I just want to say I appreciate, um, the interest in building in time into the day for social, emotional learning. And I also appreciate that like this is sort of carved out by like making all the periods the same length. So like some became shorter, some became longer. Um, so it's not like a significant chunk being carved out of the day. Um, but I also think like, given the focus on social, emotional learning in the last couple of years and, or like in the, in the triennial plan in the last couple of years, but longer than that really, um, this just feels like a good way to support our middle schoolers. So I appreciate you answering all the questions, like providing all the data and everything because that was very helpful in sort of understanding the, the proposal and the context.
Any other questions, comments? Chris, you look like you about to, you know you want to ask.
Oh, I wasn't, but you convinced me to do it. I just wanted to say that it was very clear that you have an intentional centering of the student in this proposal. Um, even just something as, as simple as making sure that the classes are equal length. Um, that's something that students intuitively can tell. Um, and I, I think that that's going to result in, um, just a greater level of consistency in terms of their ability to perform in the classroom and to feel more confident in their own abilities. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Any other, Armando? Okay, Karen. All right.
Madam Chair, just as a comment for the record, so I can go on the record, uh, I just, I'd like to go on the record if you don't mind. I also support the work that's been done here. And I will tell you, as you, as you already heard from me, the student advisory of the superintendent that I work with down at the middle school and meet with about every six weeks, the number one thing that they've been talking about is conflict and SEL. So to, to, to attempt to try to do something different in a, in a more consistent manner, I think is, 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 we're getting nothing to lose here. Uh, we can only go in a positive way. So I think their work as well. Thank you.
And again, this could be something that we, if we need to discuss it again any nineteen months with, when the contract reopens, we can certainly revisit it. I think if there's any data that would be appropriate to, to pass on, that, that would, we'd appreciate that because I think that would help us, um, have an informed decision when we, we come to review it. But I appreciate that. All right, are we ready to make a motion for this one? All right. How do we want to word this one? So approve the MOU, can I have a motion to approve the MOU as written?
Yeah, advise, so I move that we approve the advisory memorandum, agreement between the Stoughton School Committee and the Stoughton Teachers Association for the O'Donnell Middle School. As written.
As written. Any?
Second.
Okay, so that was made by Lindsay and a seconded by Armando. It's been moved and seconded. Um, any last questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried five-zero. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the Jones schedule, we are tabling for the next meeting. It is not yet complete. So.
Correct.
That is, she be continued. But moving on to the next item from the Jones, and that is the Jones Early Childhood Center fees. Um, before we begin this discussion, I do want to state that, thank you. None of us have children who attend the Jones Early Childhood Centers, so we have no financial interest in these general school fees. But, uh, Dr. Beta, do you want to present these?
Madam Chair, thank you. Um, before you tonight, uh, you have the Jones Early Childhood Monthly Rates with, uh, the current rates as written for two days, full days, five days, the AM, the four days, AM and PM, and an increase on average of about two to three percent, um, and with free and reduced continu- uh, continuations taking place as well. Um, and the new option, which will, will become part of the, um, MOU, if you will, is the five AMs and PMs. This is an area where we're looking at some options with some families that have reached out to us about five days. Um, and specifically also, this helps us potentially with, um, special education service delivery. Um, and those are brand-new rates and again, trying to use, um, and, and I'm happy if you want to round these up or round down. I just try to be consistent. If you want to say that, you know, two thirty, two fifty should just be two thirty-two, I'm fine with that. It's probably a lot easier for everybody. Um, or take it a two thirty-three, whatever you decide. I just try to be consistent. Um, and then the daily times are noted below, which there is no, no change, um, to that at all.
And could you explain when was the last time the rates have been?
Yeah, three years ago.
Three years ago. So they've been the same for the past three years?
Yep. Uh, and we did, I did look at, um, nine different public school systems in the area and their rates, and we're still below and competitive.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? Armando?
Any possibility of giving grants for such a program?
Yeah, so right now, the big push from the Commonwealth through the governor is, is, um, uh, universal pre-K, which would mean the same way we did universal kindergarten years ago back in, in 2000 in Stoughton. So it's 24 years old now. Prior to that, we used to have a fee-based K program. I was actually in your seat at the time. Um, the state is pushing to that. We are going to be looking at that as an option. What that would mean is that special education students who need a service delivery are already coming at no charge, but the peer-model students would also come at no charge. That's the idea behind universal. So we will be looking at, there's about $35 million available right now. That money is only available to the gateway cities. That money has not been increased to go out to, um, suburban communities like us that are very diverse and demographically all over the socioeconomic. Um, but we are going to, and Jonathan and I have had this discussion, uh, at 10,000 feet, we're gonna be looking at all of this during the 25, 26 year with a, um, potential positive vote of a new building and the potential of a move to a new, um, preschool. That would also be another opportunity for us to hopefully get some grant money that either supports A, bringing down the cost, um, or, or B is actually universal.
And gateway?
Gateway cities are the ten major, I think it's now 11, major cities in the state. So you're looking at Brockton, Lawrence, Lowell, um, and it goes to Springfield and so on. And those-
They're just defined by size?
They're defined by their urban, um-
Ness.
Urban-ness, I guess is the word. Um, versus us being a suburban district or another district that's rural. They have their own working group and they're recognized throughout the state for a lot of the, um, the state grant money that comes in. Usually their first choices on topics like that.
If, if I can just add to that, it's, it's not just the population size, it's the population size. It is the poverty rate, the concentration in poverty rate, uh, unemployment rate. There are other factors that go into it. They tend to be centers that were, um, big in the industrial revolutionary time period where the jobs moved, where there might have been one, uh, sector represented in the town that moved away and then they fell into, um, economic hard times as a result. Um, and they also tend to be gateways to, uh, more, uh, diverse populations that come in, um, which brings a refreshing mix of population, but can bring added challenges when it comes to education workforce development.
Is it possible to use or add or as part of this, the, and the migrants that we currently have and leverage that to?
Right. So currently, there is no formula for utilization of our migrants within the Chapter 70 formula. Um, I can tell you that right now, there is no funding coming for next year, based on what I've been told, which is a serious issue that we all have. But that said, we currently are not required by statute at all to provide services to the three and four-year-old migrants.
Any other questions or comments about the fees in particular? Chris?
Uh, I actually really love the idea of rounding up and rounding down the prices, um, just, just for ease of payment, um, and ease of accounting.
Okay.
And I didn't know if, um, I was just curious as to, and maybe this is more of a Heidi question, but, but what was used to kind of calculate the, the 24-25 fee schedule? Is it based on inflation? What, what's it based on?
Yeah, we went in the general, we did not want to, because it's been three years, the general just would be that we would look at this on a yearly basis and look at five dollars, three dollars, $10 something, but we haven't been doing that. So I wanted to stop the process of us having this discussion on a yearly basis. The committee is always willing to say, no, we're gonna freeze it. Remember that the fees that are connected go directly into that program, which pays predominantly for staffing and support. And as, as you know, um, one of our biggest issues is that that's also a highly compensated staff. They're very highly trained, you know, master's degrees. staff, they're very highly trained, you know, master's degrees and many years of experience. So this, this does not pay, you know, for more than X percentage, and I could get you the number, but we try to just make it the beginning of a discussion every single year, grounded on, this year we went, on average, I think it's one point nine to three percent, it's in that ballpark, depending on the number. So that's, that's what we use. I didn't use the budget increases seven point one, like some districts would do, or just a flat five dollars, or just a flat ten dollars. And again, those are all things you can do, and we start that process. I just tried to use a balance of numbers, and I agree with you, I think, taking the fifty cents and saying it goes down, or just make them all down is fine with, is fine with me. It's not going to make a, it's, it's not a financial huge difference for us.
I guess, related to that question, is there a goal to make this program somewhat self-sufficient, or are we just simply trying to balance?
Yeah, financially impossible. Right, you would have to be charging numbers here that would be three to four times this number. Because of, you know, the, you've got budgets where you have, within the employment areas, folks that are easily between, you know, the eighty number and a hundred and five, a hundred and ten thousand, just, and you multiply that. So you'd have to go up pretty significantly. And remember that that would also push off, because you're only charging one population of students, right? It's, it's not all ten kids, it's predominantly only five kids, and so on. So, very hard to do. We hope the state comes through with some stuff.
I have a question. Any provisions for waivers or half fees for families that currently can't afford it for whatever reason?
Yeah, so we use the free and the reduced, but we also have special circumstances, where people go on, on plans. You know, they'll say, I, I can't afford X, so they, we'll say, what can you afford? And we'll put them on seventy-five dollars a month, or whatever, and, and go from there. We've, we've had parents, in my last district, I've had parents where they were paying weekly, because for them it was just easier. It's a pain, but the fact is, we're happy to, we need the students, so we're happy to, to do that. And we've had to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? So is, what is the deadline for this? I, I know that the registration is starting soon, so I assume that we need to have these finalized sooner rather than later.
We would love to have these finalized tonight.
Tonight, okay.
Simply because it would go out as part of the meeting with parents and information tomorrow, as soon as possible.
So, any other feedback? So if we were to vote it tonight, we have the proposal to round down, so that all the numbers are even. I guess that could be part of our motion. Are there any?
I have a technical issue.
Yes.
Is this something that should have been, should have received the previous meeting, so it's open to the public for that time? Or we went to this for the first time and then voting on it, is that an open meeting violation?
No, it's not, it's definitely not an open meeting violation.
Okay.
Because you put it out as a meeting, it's on your regular meeting, and it's been out.
Okay.
So it doesn't violate the open meeting law. If, if, it may violate, maybe a practice that you have, hence the conversation we had earlier from the email that you sent to me. But no, there's not a violation of open meeting law.
That's all I need.
Certainly, in the future, maybe if this is going to be a yearly discussion, that we can put that on. I have the, I actually got a copy of the standing agenda items. We can certainly put that as a standing agenda item, and where we could have several meetings leading up to it, so this is not just a one-meeting discussion. But certainly, if this is going to be part of a yearly plan, we can plan for that next year. And begin that process.
And it would be early, it'd probably be open meeting December, vote January, something like that. Right during the budget season, so that way, when we go out early in February, it's already done.
Yes.
Whatever the decision the committee is.
Right. Chris?
Dr. Bada, I recommend that when you, you made some really excellent points, from it, once again, from an asset frame. When this is sent out to parents and communicated to parents, I'd really recommend that you do that asset frame as well. You know, with the comparisons of the other districts, you mentioned here the fact that the rates have stayed the same for, for several years. And we recognize the, the current impact that inflation has had, growing inflation on families in Stoughton, and, and trying to be mindful of that while being mindful the fact that, you know, we do need to do what we can to make up a budget shortfall. But, but just really, you know, the fact that this is the most competitive in the area, I think that's a really great point to emphasize with families, so that they understand the value that they're getting for their dollar. Having put my kids through daycare and through preschool, I, I can't believe that it's this cheap, you know, ten, fifteen years later. So I can attest that this is, this is definitely-
Test as well.
Yes. But, but some families that, that's maybe a first child going through the process may not understand that. So I think anything we could do to help them understand that this really is very competitive and very family-friendly pricing, I would recommend that. And then if we're done with discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Sure. I just want to note that we do recognize that is, it is going to be, you know, for some families, that there is going to be, that extra ten dollars a month is going to be a challenge, but there are options. We can, we can work with families if that is going to be a challenge to them.
We, yes, we will always work with families, absolutely.
So don't let that put anybody off, who says, oh my gosh, this, is this going to increase a little bit every year? You know, I do realize, especially when you have multiple kids in there, but it is still a good value. But I will defer to Chris if you're ready for a motion.
I am. Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we accept the monthly rates as written, with the exception of the rates that have a cent component, that they be rounded down to the nearest dollar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
All right. Second. All right, so the motion was made by Chris and seconded by Lindsay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried five zero. Yes.
Really?
Yes. All right. And next, moving on to our other fees. This is the FY twenty-five summer program fees. Before we begin this discussion, I want to note that I have filed a disclosure by a school committee member of a financial interest in a general school fee, as required by nine thirty CMR six point oh nine, due to my child's participation in one of the summer programs under discussion. I pledge to approach this manner fairly and impartially. Is there anyone else on the committee who also filed a disclosure?
Yes.
All right, Chris did as well. Armando?
No.
Okay. And, no, you're not, and Lindsay's not affected. So, just wanted to have that clear, that, where we are aware of this, but still able to participate in this conversation. So, this is for the summer programs. I do want to stress that there is, we do have some differences, the nights of summer program and the extended school year, for which grades?
Oh God, is it K one?
Is it second through?
Oh, two, two to-
Two to five.
Two to five, and then the, K one?
So we, nights of summer is two through five.
Yes.
But we also added a acceleration academy component that can extend earlier than that, if we want to target specific grades with specific needs.
Okay.
So there's, there's more flexibility from the traditional program we had last year under nights of summer.
Okay. But this program, that was, that program is separate from what we're discussing tonight, because that program has begun registration, that one is covered under a grant. We are not discussing the fees for that program tonight, because there are none.
Nights of summer is covered under Title One, Title Three, and a flex out of Title Four.
Perfect. All right. So I wanted to be clear to families that were confused about, like, I just signed up for nights of summer, I didn't realize there was a fee. There's not a fee for that nights of summer program. We are looking specifically at the preschool to grade one transitional program, the elementary and secondary theater program, the athletics programming for a high school and the middle school, the rising, the STEM program, and at the, for the middle school, or at least the grade six and seventh through eighth. So, we have the fees here. Dr. Bada, I turn over to you to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. As you know, thank you to the work of Tara Maltinbaum, who's, our data special also runs our extended programming in the summertime. Through her work, we've tried to pare down to just literally the basics of expenses for these programs. So you'll see that these particular programs offer, for twenty days, example, preschool grade one transition program, this is free breakfast and free lunch, does not provide transportation, which is consistent, and runs at the DAW Elementary School with a program facilitator teacher and seven other full-time teachers, has a budget of forty-one thousand dollars, seventy students, that's about five hundred and eighty-six dollars per. That's a daily rate of twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents, and an hourly rate of five dollars and eighty cents, eighty-six cents. I think you'll see that these are very competitive rates. We also went a step further and added reduced lunch, which brings the hourly rate to four dollars and thirty-nine cents, and the free lunch to two dollars and ninety-three cents. And our goal here is that, in general, some of these are going to probably be at more than the minimum. So you see minimum seventy students, so we think we can break some even, and then we have some potential third parties that we're reaching out to. I have one person I've already reached out to, to help us with scholarships, if you will. So we don't see this as being a drain in any way, shape, or form to our budget. The summer twenty-four elementary secondary theater program, located at Stone High, again, program director, assistant director, lighting director, this one's very specific, as you know. Again, that, that comes down to two hundred and fifty-three dollars with ninety students, and again, we know that that's going to more than likely be above ninety students. The daily rate there is twelve sixty-five, the hourly rate is two fifty-three. Reduced lunch is at one ninety, daily rate goes to a dollar ninety an hour. That's for that eight-thirty to one-thirty, free lunch, free breakfast, again, no transportation. And then the, the free lunch is a hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the, for the twenty days, at one twenty-seven an hourly rate. Again, we are trying very hard to make sure that we make this feasible for families. The athletic program, rising ninth to twelfth graders is a hundred and fifty dollars, that's a dollar fifty an hour. We did not put another option on there. The strength and conditioning, same thing, it's a dollar fifty an hour, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. The OMS, that is a new one, that's for grades rising seven to eight. We think we're going to have a really strong potential with this one, based on some of the things we're hearing. Again, we, we kept that flat, it's twenty days, eight-thirty to one-thirty, the breakfast and the lunch are part of that. The STEM rising grade six program at O'Donnell Middle School is at three hundred and thirty-four dollars for sixty students, which is a daily rate of sixteen seventy, an hourly rate of three thirty-four. Again, we are accepting students full-time, you're in for twenty days or, or you're not. It's, it's, it's not, you come in for an hour and you leave. And then the same thing with the STEM seven, uh, seventh to eighth grade program, which has a three hundred and sixty-seven dollar for sixty students. Again, you'll see that we're not trying to make any money on of this. Any and all monies that do come in and exceed the line item will be, will remain in the revolving account aligned to that line item. In other words, if the SPS STEM seven and eight grade program brings in ninety students and more money, and you're offsetting others, that's fine, but any remaining money at the end of the program stays in that program. So we can potentially have some startup going forward. So the idea is self, self-sustaining, but the idea is that we're not all, all of a sudden going to take that money and put it somewhere else in the school budget. It maintains itself as, as a, as a summer program. And I know this is hard, recognizing that we've gone through a number of years of having it without any fees. We are getting phone calls on a regular basis, there is an ask for this. I don't know if that means it will be a hundred less kids, or two hundred less kids, or a hundred less, more kids, but the, the communication about what are we doing is definitely coming in, both email as well as phone calls. So, both at the school level and at the central office.
And the funding for these previously was, this was part of the S R, correct? Just a word.
There was a combination of S R funding and district funding.
District, okay. Questions or comments on, in general, or specific programs, Chris?
As chief optimist, I was wondering if there is a cap on student participation for any of these programs? And, and I, I would love to get more information or detail in terms of when this is finalized, around scholarships for hardship cases, what, what would that process look like, who would they need to contact?
Yep. So the, it'll go through Ms. Maltinbaum, who runs the program, she'll be the key communicator. We're going to use our online system for paying, they'll have an access for checking off if, because even though everybody's free, the fact is, we still have that connected, collected information. The parents will sign off, giving us the ability to review, because for every program that you run, you have to have parental checkoff, you can't just do it arbitrarily as a school district. And then from there, we'll move to those, I'll call them special circumstances and requests. And we see a combination of a couple of things. A, as I said earlier, there's the potential that, we know that we can offset that cost, number one. Number two, I'm working with local folks to ask them for, I'm calling it one-time scholarship money, that would go directly for students participating in, in summer. And as those monies come in, and hopefully we get a few dollars, they'll go directly to those programs. That's my goal. So. Great. There currently are no caps, but again, the committee is, is able to, to do that. I mean, you could, in terms of, if you have two children, the, the first child is the highest price, the second price is at half price, or something like that, kind of like you see in the store. You could, you could go that way if you want to. In most cases, the summer programs around us, where we started to look at what other people are doing, it's a straightforward pay, there's no cap.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. When I meant cap, I meant enrollment.
Oh, yes, absolutely. In, in which direction would you like to go?
I didn't know if, if there were limitations in terms of the number of staff per students.
Yeah, so what, one of the things that we did is, in this, in the summer programs that we had around, it, we've, we've always looked at the program and then how many staffs. And so the biggest ones are going to be the theater one and the intramurals. Those are the ones where we might have to at some point say, the size of the gym, the facility, so on and so forth. So we'll go with that first, let's say the number was sixty kids, we'll then say to ourselves, do we have more space? Could we potentially hire another staff member? Do we need to? Do we grow, I'm not, we're not going to shut off the sixty-first kid, right? That doesn't make any sense. But if we start to get to seventy-two, we might say, okay, we now need to take a look at, if we go to eighty, we need another, we're going to need another teacher there. And then you calculate the costs, and by then, it's paying for itself. It's, it's a wash. If that makes sense.
So if I can summarize what I'm, what I'm hearing, what I think I'm hearing, there really is no hard cap, and that you're going to assess that based on demand, and the ability to provide quality programming over the summer.
Yeah, with, with the reference being, A, the, the, the space availability, B, the, how many, we, we don't want to make this unman, unmanageable for staff. This is, this is, this is about fun and learning. So if, if we really want a cap at, just to use one, seventy students, seven teachers with a program facilitator, that's a ten to one ratio. So that would mean to me that once we got to potentially another ten, eleven kids, we're probably asking to see, or we have a hard, we have a hard seventy number and we just hold there. I mean, maybe there's a seventy-one, but there's, there can't be an eighty-one. I don't know if that makes sense.
Any other questions, comments? Armando?
Yes, this is for Stoughton schoolchildren only?
Currently, correct.
Is it possible to expand this? I know there, we have families in Stoughton that their children don't go to Stoughton schools. Can their children participate, since this is a fee-based?
The committee has the right to say that you want it for Stoughton residents, not necessarily Stoughton public school students. So if you wanted to say that this is open to Stoughton residents, then we would, you know, they would have to come to us with that, because we don't have any way to communicate with them, but the fact is, that's the right of the committee to do so.
I did want to note that I do think a lot of the prices are very competitive. I mean, I do regret that we do have to charge for them, given how people got so used to having the great free programs, and, and that. I do think of the prices, the preschool grade one transition program, that is the one that gives me the most pause, and I understand it's because of the staffing needs for that. I just wonder if there's any way, if we could bring that down in more in line with the other ones. This, I'm thinking of the, the STEM programs, which are, you know, in the three thirties, three sixties, it just feels like five eighty-six for twenty days. I know it's still competitive with other programs out there, but compared to $150 for the intramurals and the, you know, $250.
Yeah, it's all around the design of what's going to happen and the number of staff. I mean, if you take a look at it, having a intramural sports program is going to be significantly less costly to us than the day-to-day operations of the students in a transitional program. That's what it comes down to. It's nothing except for that. The, so, and as you can see, if I remember correctly, I believe it's the biggest budget of all the ones that's in here as well. And that's because of the number of staff and the students are, in this particular case, this could be your first hard cap, right? Just because of, these are the little ones, so we have to be, you know, we probably would, let's say we, just for the sake of argument, we got to seventy-three, those numbers after seventy in this particular program would probably be the creating of a waiting list. And then if we get another ten, bang, we got another ten, we can hopefully find another staff member. And that's the other thing is, you know, can we find all these staff members? Because we're out late right now. So that's the reason why it's so timely to not only get it registration, but to get it out to the staff members to be able to be, to work the summertime.
So if we don't get enough, let's say only, you know, twenty students sign up for one of these programs, do we have any guarantee that we run it or?
Yeah, so what would happen is, based on the ratio of staff to students, we would take a look and say, when we post for the staff, we'll probably have a lot to say around enrollment and pending funding. That's the only out that we really have. So if only thirty kids sign up and not seventy, then we're running three classes of ten and a coordinator. We're not running seven classes. If that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Counselor?
Yes.
Should we have a discussion whether it should be for residents of Stone?
Any thoughts in the committee about opening it to residents of Stone beyond the homeschool parents or the parents that attend other schools, aren't offered children to other schools? Or should we keep it to certain public schools only, given that it's fee-based? Chris?
I would be in favor of a split approach. It seems to me that the preschool through grade one transition program would be, would better benefit students who are going to transition into Stone public schools. I would be more open to other students participating in the other programs.
If that makes sense. Lindsay, thoughts?
That makes sense, yeah.
Karen, any thoughts?
And would you like me to add a little bit to that?
Sure.
That program's an invitation program.
Okay.
Because it's specifically designed for students on a developmental delay.
Yes.
And also, just the cost is high because it runs two teachers per classroom, as opposed to having a single teacher providing instruction.
Thank you for saving the day again.
Right, so that one's off the table, that one has to be Stone public schools only. So then it remains to the theater program, the athletic programs, and the STEM programs, if we have any. Do we need a motion? Or? So do we need two separate motions, one to approve the fees and then one to approve opening everything? Is it the transitional program? Does that make sense to you?
For the purposes of clarity, I would do so.
Okay, all right. So do we have a motion about the fees?
I will move that we approve the proposed fees for the summer programs for summer 2024, as written.
As written. All right, so Lindsay made that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Motion's been moved and seconded. Do we have any other motions on the fees? All right, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that motion's carried five zero, and now a motion. Any other, yes, motion?
I would move that we open enrollment for the summer 2024 elementary and secondary theater program, SHS athletics programming for grades rising nine through twelve, OMS athletics programming for grades rising seven through eight, SPS STEM rising sixth grade program, and SPS STEM seven through eighth grade program to Stone residents.
All right, so that motion has been made by Lindsay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Armando. Any other motions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that motion's carried five zero.
Thank you to the committee, and my apologies on that first situation. And thank you to Mr. Ford for saving the day on that, for the purposes of clarity. I apologize.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the facilities, subcommittee recommendations. This is a result of several months of study. I know that Armando was a representative on this committee. Armando, would you like to?
Yes, sure. I think in putting these options together, it took a bit of work, a lot of discussion, a lot of brainstorming. We've found that we're going to be met with some challenges in the future. We have student population increasing in Stone. We have special ed increasing and HEEL increasing. And with those increases, we need a little bit of flexibility in determining what option would work best for us at this time. And Dr. Bieta, if you want to.
Yeah, so the working committee, and thanks to that working committee of Ms. Hussani, Ms. Pinanoki, and Mr. Fitzgerald, and Mr. Barbosa. We are trying to inform the school committee that the committee needs some flexibility over the next few months in terms of what's coming up with the potential vote. So the idea here was to try to provide the school committee some options that it can clarify to the public, if you will. No, there's no ask for a vote here tonight because it's too early to make a synthesis of the next move, if you will. But if we're asked through you, Madam Chair, the committee is asked, I'm asked, we can say that the committee does have options that it's taken from a subcommittee that it's considering. And so the first option is to, with the passage of the new building, is to close the South Elementary School and move the Jones preschool program to the Wilkins Elementary School. And furthermore, repurpose the Jones as an alternative education program for grade six to twelve. And there would be no change to the administration offices. We would remain here. Option two is to close the South Elementary School, move the Jones preschool program to the Wilkins Elementary, and add kindergarten classrooms. So the difference of that one is that you're taking the new South, would also have kindergarten classrooms because it needs to, for the new design, to develop an early childhood center. This would also create more classroom spaces at the elementary school, the Hanson, the DAW, and the Gibbons specifically, where there, as you know, there's a current need and an increase in enrollment. And the Jones Elementary would continue to house the administration and the new alternative program. So the difference between one and two is that we'd have a split K program with the new school having to have six classrooms and the remaining nine classrooms would be at the Wilkins, therefore giving up. And the reason is, our building project is a K to five. We can't move from that. The third option is to close the South Elementary School and move the Jones preschool to the Wilkins, along with the administration, and close the Jones. You would be closing two schools. The subcommittee is, doesn't believe, and Mr. Barbosa can infer other comments, but the subcommittee doesn't feel that with increased enrollment and the need for an alternative education program in the future, that this option is in the best interest, long-term, of the school committee. It's a little too short-sighted because we have such a change going on in enrollment. Also, we have a potential 25% match with the electrification project of the Wilkins Elementary School, which would require us, once the kids are out and the building is closed, quote, that the project would take place over about a few months and then we could make the move. So that building may not be open until the spring of 28 or actually even the fall of 28, if we were to do this. And that's in every situation where you're moving the Jones schools to the Wilkins because you can't do the electrification project with people in the building, especially with New England winters and all that stuff. So, and the general consideration of the committee, I mean, we looked at, you know, we looked at, is this a historical site, for example, the Jones? And it's not registered in the state registry. We looked at the issue of policy, right? So you're the working policy group of the school committee. When you close a building, the building belongs to the town. So now it becomes a select board discussion. There's the discussion on, and without getting into the weeds here, because there's a lot of what-ifs over the next few months, there's the discussion of what does the project come in at a cost? Is there a savings? And does that savings lead to a discussion of the potential funds being used for the closure of the South School? Or is, does the town decide, after it's given up from the school committee, to give it to a developer to do something with, tear it down? We don't know those questions, and it's, to be quite frank, it's too early. What we do know is that a new school allows for us to make one of two solid moves and keeps us viable, if you will, with increased enrollment. Our NESDEC numbers, which you'll get at the next, we just got our spring NESDEC update, which is growing leaps and bounds. It's like, great in one way and a struggle. But we have to have, the committee should have as many options and really came down to these being the only viable. Mr. Barbosa and the committee had a lot of discussion about keeping the South open and using that partially as an alternative school. Just too much to do there, to be able to do that. We can't try to go for a new building and also spend millions of dollars in another building to try to keep it open, since we're making an argument that we need a new South School. But we're also really in need of some alternative education for six to twelve, as we have students that are, have behavioral issues, suspension issues, and so on. We need to think about more so than just sending a student out of district. We have to have, we have to start to create options. And we've had discussions as a, just a subcommittee, not the committee, because this would be the full committee. We had a discussion in the subcommittee about the potential that we could be a site for the area, for other schools to pay us as part of an alternative site within this building. And as you know, that's kind of like the collaborative idea. But it, long-term, could be financially very beneficial because everybody's looking for a general education student who gets suspended for forty-five days. Just sending a kid home for forty-five days on a tutor and edgenuity is not the future. That's just a stopgap. We need a place where they can go every day and be with other kids, but more importantly, get the counseling and support to send them back to the general classroom at the end of those forty-five days, if, or to a specialized program if needed. So that's the thirty thousand feet down to five thousand feet. And fortunately, we can't get below five thousand feet right now because we don't really know what some of the next steps are going to be. But when asked, we can say that due diligence has been looked upon by a subcommittee of the school committee to provide feasible options at less cost. The biggest cost in any of these is the tear down of a building, the tear down of a two buildings. So estimates, I'm not even going to try to put out a number, but the estimates may not be as high as people think. This building, the Jones, would actually be more expensive than the South because the South is a one-floor building, pretty much. This building has got multiple things going on, including the three floors and two floors and all of that stuff. Different site and all of that.
I'd like to emphasize that even the old South School, if we spent millions and millions of dollars patching it, it'll be an old patched-up school, and it can cost probably close to, or not as much as it's going to cost us for the new building.
Yeah, it's a great point that the, one of the things that's come up a number of times is the issue that, that when we, why don't we just, you know, renovate the school? And, you know, our committee has gone through that process, the building committee has gone through that process, and the cost just isn't there. Remember that if we were actually going to, you know, just renovate that, the South School, that cost without the MSBA is thirty-five to forty million dollars. And remember that that wouldn't be, without MSBA, that's not a renovation. That's literally updating the building. You're not adding to it, you know, or anything like that. So those are all discussions, of course, that'll take place over the next few months. So there is no vote tonight. It's public information. And the information that you have received from the subcommittee that you can then act on and at least share with the public, this is what we're thinking overall.
Okay. So I need to formally hand over the meeting to Lindsay.
Yes.
Okay. Unfortunately, I have to leave, so I'm going to hand over the meeting to Lindsay to take over for the rest of this. So thank you very much. I overdid myself, so.
Get some rest.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for leaving us this far.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience, as I do with this, so.
Yeah, all right. So I think, just to clarify a couple things from Dr. Bieta's comments, which I appreciate. I think, just to pull out a couple details so the public understands, once the school committee votes to close a school building or remove a site's educational designation, then it goes to the select board to decide what to do with the property. Technically, it's town-owned property being used by the schools. So we just need to be thoughtful about exploring all of our options, as the subcommittee has been, because it won't be reserved for us for later use. We're not interested in holding on to vacant properties, but like, want to be really thoughtful about all of our needs down the road. So I appreciate that, and I'd also, I think, knowing that this is the first conversation likely of many, would love to get more information when it comes up again about like, what is an alternative education program? Like, what is entailed there, what that would mean for like, budget staffing, all of that? Just I'm sure these questions will come up, but it'll be good to know. So thank you. Any other discussion on the facilities, subcommittee recommendations? I'm sorry, Karen, I can't see you. Okay, cool. So we will move on to financial warrants, which I don't know that I actually have. So I'm thinking, that is from the last meeting.
Oh, that's around me.
Okay, so we can skip that item on the agenda. Okay, cool.
I don't see any, I might pick it up.
We can check that off.
We can check it off, you know, it's accomplished. Okay. And then that moves us to the next item on the agenda, which is the acceptance of the minutes from the April ninth, 2024 meeting. I have a couple edits that I can throw out there. We welcome those from other folks as well. So the first one is on page one, under present. It includes Fabienne Francois-Maurice, that was actually her first meeting, no longer being on the committee, so she was not present. I also want to note on page one, under meeting to order, it says, Acting Chair, Ms. Lindsay Kreckler. I just want to use the language senior member, Ms. Lindsay Kreckler, because that was the language provided by our attorney, so just want to make sure that that is consistent. So senior member, Lindsay Kreckler, opened the meeting at 6:08. Sorry, I had a couple. On page five, under Jones schedule, the second paragraph, Ms. Lindsay Kreckler asks school committee members, this got confusing because what I said at the meeting is actually the process, not the process we followed later, but what was said at the meeting and should be in the minutes, is Ms. Lindsay Kreckler asks school committee members to send the chair any questions they have by email to be sent to the superintendent, so skipping that, like, she will send these to Chair Catherine Weiss. What ended up happening behind the scenes is we weren't sure if Catherine was going to be back, so we changed it to sending them directly to me, so that is actually what happened, but just for purposes of like, accurately recording the meeting, want to make sure that's reflected. And then my last update, I think, was on, yeah, this is the last one I flagged, was on page seven, under unfinished business B elementary school building project. The last sentence says the next step is for the select board to vote on this, but the next step is actually for a town meeting to vote at the special town meeting, held during town meeting, just to make sure that that process is clear. So I'll stop there. Any other edits or amendments to the, it was my first one sharing, I had to make sure I like, had it.
Can I, can I back up one?
Yep.
Elementary school building project, the, we did go to, the building committee did go to the finance committee requesting it to be voted to go on the town meeting warrant. I don't know if that clarifies anything.
Sorry, can you?
So the select board had to put it on the warrant of a special meeting within the annual. So I think that, because the, I think that's the reflective of the timetable. In other words, we got the municipal operations and the finance committee presented, and... In other words, we got the municipal operations and the finance committee presented, and they both recommended prior to town meeting. The next step is for the select board to vote to put this into the town, special town meeting warrant.
I thought that happened before it went to finance committee. Is that, okay.
Yeah, let me quickly.
Okay, cool. So we can?
I just don't want you to take the wrong vote.
No, I appreciate it. Any other amendments in the meantime while we check that? Okay.
I'm going to say that, based on my calendar, that you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
We can always come back and correct it if we need to.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks for giving me the time.
Okay, perfect. So I'll entertain a motion for the minutes, if nobody has.
I'd like to approve, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the Stoughton School Committee for April 9, 2024, as amended.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, now I'm trying to just find my place in the notes. Okay, so we'll do a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. So motion carried 4-0. Okay. So we also have some policies on the agenda for policy review. I think we are actually in the same position we were in at the last meeting, where we now have half of the policy working group not present, and I believe these are not time-sensitive, so we can kick these to the next meeting, looking for just input from the policy working group on that, that that makes sense to do, and there's nothing in here we need to take up.
Absolutely, because Catherine does take the lead on bringing these to the committee, so.
Okay, so we will table the policies on the agenda, knowing that there's nothing time-sensitive there. So that brings us to number six on the agenda, which is unfinished business or old business. So the first thing is the FY25 budget and articles. This is just a standing agenda item that will stay on the agenda through town meeting in May. There's also an update here from the chair that I'm just going to read, which is in the House Committee on Ways and Means Proposed Budget, the total Chapter 70/Student Opportunity Act funding for Stoughton would be $28,594,530, which is an increase of $34,846 over the governor's proposal, and a total increase of $2,155,164 over FY24. The Senate still needs to propose their budget, and that final state budget may not be done until after July 1st. So this doesn't change the budget we submitted to the town in January, but wanted to make sure we're incorporated, or like, discussing updates that come from the state. Dr. Vayetta, anything to add there?
No, that's the, the hold harmless $30 per student has been moved to $104 per student. So that's where you come up with that difference. For, this is really to help out those communities that are only getting $30 per student. It gives us a couple of dollars, but right now, those funds wouldn't be available to us until a fall town meeting.
Gotcha, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, cool. So the next is the elementary school building project update and responsibilities. So at our last meeting, we announced, and this has happened, that there was in a butters' meeting held on April 10th for folks who had bought the property. Upcoming dates to just be aware of, on Wednesday, April 24th, which is tomorrow, there will be a presentation of the schematic design to the full MSBA board tomorrow, and that will finalize the budget for the entire project. The next date to keep in mind is Monday, not February, Monday, April 29th, at 6:30 PM at the South Elementary School, which is 171 Ash Street in Stoughton, there will be a community forum for town meeting reps, as well as members of other municipal committees or boards and anyone else who's interested, just to learn more about the project and see the current South School. So again, that is Monday, the 29th of April at 6:30 PM at the South Elementary School. And then the last date to keep in mind is that there will be, again, a special town meeting within town meeting on Monday, May 6th, at 7 o'clock PM at the Stoughton High School Auditorium, where the article in the warrant will be discussed and potentially voted on that evening. So, anything else to add there from the building committee?
Question?
Yeah.
Do we need a time lapse to visit the South School?
You do not. No, Madam Chair, that is totally updated.
Okay, perfect. I have, there's an update from the chair here regarding other matters, but it was about a MAS C meeting that she attended, so I'm going to leave that for her at the next meeting to share back, just because I wasn't there, and I want to make sure she gets to speak to that and add any context, so I'll let her know that we're saving that for next time. Any other matters to bring up this evening, folks? Yes?
Madam Chair, I'd like to give the committee some homework, sorry to say. As you know, we're entering town meeting time, and priorities of the budget could come up, could come up. And so what does that mean? Is that the committee needs to prepare itself for any potential that there are more funds available, and what would those priorities be? I will send you the list of the cuts that we've made, and then it's up to you to please send those priorities to the chair. The chair and I will then bundle those for the entire committee, and you'll have to have some discussions prior to that. I anticipate, based on what I'm hearing and being told, that town meeting members are coming to the floor with changes to budgets. What that means, I haven't been given specifically, but I don't want the committee to be found in a situation where it's asked about, does it or doesn't? Because town meeting is town meeting. It is what it is. We have to prepare for whatever that question is going to be, and I've asked the chair and I to meet at some point to put together our thoughts on what our presentation will look like for the budget, so that all five of you and I are on the same page, if that makes sense.
Cool.
And it's just, yeah, it's, you know, it's one of those things where I'm a former town meeting member, I know what happens. People can change a line item in any budget. They can hold it, then they ask questions, and they want to move money. I don't anticipate that's going to happen. However, I'm preparing that it's going to happen.
Never hurts to be prepared. So thank you for the homework assignment. All right, so at that, we will adjourn the regular meeting. We do have to re-enter into executive session, just to wrap up a couple more agenda items that we didn't get to when we opened the meeting in executive session. So at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, and then we'll adjourn the end of, or, I'm trying to think through, I think we can.
Then we'll reopen.
Yeah.
Re-open, adjourn the regular meeting, open executive session, reopen executive session, and then close out from there.
And not to come back to general session.
Not to come back into regular session, thank you, that is exactly the language I needed. Okay. Any motions to that effect?
Seven.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thanks, Armando. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.